Okay, I'm gonna call this regular city commission meeting to order at 7 o'clock on November 19th, 2015. And Rebecca Lepley is gonna lead us in prayer, so I'd like everyone to please rise. Immediately after that, we'll be saying the pledge of allegiance.
From the English translation of La Marseillaise, "God of mercy and justice, see our tyrants judge our hearts. Thy goodness be with us. Defend us from all oppressors. You reign in heaven and on earth, and before you all must bend. In your arms come support us, you great God, Lord of the thunder." Let us pray. Holy God, I thank you for these people who gather here this night, placing their hearts your vision to help us go forward, show us the steps of the path that you would have us take, and give us the courage and strength to follow it. We pray this in the name of Almighty God. Amen.
To the side of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Carrigan.
Here.
Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Melvin.
Here.
Commissioner Simpson.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Senator Louie.
Here.
Moving on to item 4A, which is a communication from Jade DeBoyer, St. Clair County Kirk.
Make a motion to accept the communication. Please compile.
Motion to support.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Has been received and filed. We're moving on now to the public comment portion of the meeting. You're welcome to come up to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to under five minutes.
Hello, my name is Janet Demest, and I reside at 308 Ward Street in the City of Marine. I really enjoy reading the 100 years ago articles in the Times Herald. One of late made me laugh right out loud. A James Carrier reported his horse and buggy missing from the corner of Bard and River Street in the city of Port Huron. Well, the next day, the police found the wagon overturned and wrecked, but no horse. So no doubt that horse is still galloping around somewhere. Well, another 100-plus years ago, in 1867, in the village of Marine here, a president was elected, and that president's name was Valentine Saff. Through the years, the Saff family has helped shape this city. Mr. Downey is now affiliated with the Saff family in the shaping of Marine City. To say we need a bigger and better attorney to shadow his decisions is questionable and very costly. And while I'm thinking about it, just saying, I would like to comment about a comment from a few meetings ago. My nephew is a prosecuting attorney in our state capital of Lansing, and I was curious, and I asked Steve, "Do you speak to your spouse during heavy caseloads and things along those lines?" He answered like this, excuse me. When I get home at the end of the day, I don't even want to dress the fish in the fishbowl. I grab my sneakers, and I run, and I run, and I run, like Forrest Gump, to clear my head. Well, as now, as far as the PA 33, I don't want the language police to come in, but this collecting and not paying back, or paying back and collecting and not back and forth is very confusing. All I know is if I were to go into a lending institution, ask for money, and tell the loan officer, "It's doubtful I will pay back," I'd probably be thrown right out the front door. This is like playing with other people's money. But the other people either don't have it, or are extremely cautious in their lending and spending, whether it be in the private sector or governmental. We have become a society of its only. You hear it on TV, mashed potatoes faster for only $9.95, rid yourself of the black toenail for only $19.95, and if that isn't enough, they barrage you during your dinner hour with some more of its only routine. Well, we've heard it right here, $100,000 home will only cost you $150 a year. Marine City taxpayers are only doubt, and I will tell you why. Younger folks would like to take their family and go have some quality family time, take their children to a football game, buy a new bike, or just get through Christmas without going into deep debt. While older folks would like to take a trip north, or, "Hey, honey bunny, let's go on a cruise," without going into deep debt. Marine City residents do not mind paying their share, but let's be fair, any credit counselor will tell you to set money aside, save for emergencies, pay yourself first. My tax preparer has a sign as you walk into the entrance. It reads, "What did you make last year? Just send it in." Well, I hope this isn't becoming Marine City's motto. What did you make last year? Send it in. What appears to be happening is history is trying to repeat itself. We will revert back to a small community with a few businesses along the nicely paved water street, but not many residents. You say one thing, but do another. But on a lighter side, I would like to publicly and personally thank the Mariner Theater for the showing of The Creature of the Black Lagoon. What a movie, cracked me right up, and how refreshing, not one cuss word. And also the free popcorn and water, free was good. And the beautiful hanging decorations around town, DPW done a fantastic job. They have everyone in a much-needed festive mood. In conclusion, this is my take on things in my only five minutes. Thank you.
Have anyone else come into the podium? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 6, which is the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion that we amend the agenda to add the letter we received, discussion on John Stewart letter, and that would be 8C on, excuse me, 10C.
10C.
On our agenda.
Motion to support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So agenda has been approved as amended. Moving on to item 7A, which is city commission regular meeting.
I'm going to approve the minutes from the city commission regular meeting on November 5th, 2015, as presented.
Motion to support. Any discussion on the minutes?
Yes, I have to make a comment on the vote, on the first vote. I want to clarify my vote. I did vote nay on the first vote, but I did vote yes on the second vote for the project.
So you want your vote to be nay on the Brownfield Plan Resolution?
The first vote, correct.
Anyone else? Thank you. All in favor, say yea.
Yea.
Yea. All opposed, say nay. It's been a long day, I'm sorry. Would you prefer yes?
It's just different.
Yeah. Item 8, now we're moving on to item 8A, zoning board of appeals minutes from August, so it's the consent agenda. So we got the zoning board minutes from August 5th, we got the planning commission minutes from September 14th, we've got the planning commission minutes from October 12th, we've got the departmental activity reports, the Marine City Fire Authority run report, we have item 8F, which is a business license for Tobacco Outlet USA, item 8G, which is business license for Kupsky Bookkeeping and Tax Service.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda and place it on file.
Motion to support. Any discussion?
Just a quick question on this tobacco outlet. I see that on the second page, it says, "This business metal county, state, local, federal licensing." Do they have to do anything special for that? Didn't check anything. Wondered.
Is that your question?
Just on the second page there, the little box where it says, "This business metal county, state, local, federal," I don't think there is anything, is there for tobacco?
No, I don't believe so. I'd like to check that.
Then maybe it's just gonna no, I don't know.
I'll go with that.
Anything else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, say no. All right. Agenda has been approved. Moving on to item 9A, which is discussion on the PA 33 special assessment.
I make a motion at this time that we not collect the PA 33 special assessment, therefore not spending that money and adjusting the budget.
Motion to support. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
You have one.
Terry.
I suggest if we were going to do that, which is a logical move, that we also make a resolution to cancel the election and save the money.
Well, I'm not prepared to do that, but...
Well, we can vote on it.
Just a thought, there's gonna be an election anyway because of the school, and I think the college is also gonna go for it, so we're gonna be having one anyway.
Well, we'll still pay, spend money on it.
Small portion, though.
Okay, fine. It's just, if we're not gonna do it, we oughta not do it.
Is there any support to amend the original motion? Do we have support for the original motion?
Yeah, you had a second.
All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no.
No.
All right. So this tax will not be collected. Moving on to item 9B, which is the Titanic memorial.
I'm just here to get the final approval on that. You have the picture, the location, and the design of what it's actually gonna look like, so...
It's in the original spot that you did the, from the beginning, right?
Mm-hmm.
Commissioner Hendrick.
I see it's changed a little bit. Now we have the brick pavers and benches.
Yeah, there was always gonna be some form of brick pavers or some type of, you know, like mulch, but I think the mulch would be way too messy. So what we're gonna try to do, instead of actual brick pavers, we'd like to maybe, I was talking to Mike about possibly getting like poured concrete or stamped concrete. Yeah, not a huge, not a real huge area, but just something where somebody could walk up and, you know, and have it, you know, be able to be kept neat and tidy.
Yeah, 'cause we went through that whole brick paper thing one time downtown, and I know a lot of it was a slip problem because they get wet, and then the other thing is the kids pick them up and chuck them.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what Mike mentioned.
So if you're gonna do stamped concrete, that's fine.
Yeah.
I guess, I know I see the benches and the ones going the one way, but does it really make sense to go that way if the river...
Well, it's, we had it, actually, what you see there was actually going to be in another location, and that was gonna be in between the two benches up by the sidewalk because somebody else was very interested in having this come, and they were, this was somewhat their design. And so the reason for the benches on, you know, we wanted them on both sides of the memorial. The one that would be, what, to the west, should be this one, you, I think you would still be able to see the water and everything else, but you would clearly be able to see the amphitheater and the traffic, and that spot's really not being used or anything anyway, so I think, you know, if we could get the seating and everything there, I think it would look very nice and be an additional, you know, place where people sit during the amphitheater, or during the, like, the concerts and...
So what kind of plantings? Are we putting something in that Mike's not gonna have to maintain, or nobody's gonna really maintain?
I already talked to Mike about that. I discussed possibly just, like, some small Victorian roses, just maybe four bushes, like, maybe a couple red ones, a couple of white ones that would just be, you know, be very neatly, they're not gonna be big bushy things.
Something that stays dwarf?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
The only other thing that I'd just like to, maybe where that ditch is, we had talked about that before, maybe trying to do something, when you look past that, just to make that look a little bit better, which, you know, some, like a rod on your fencing or something of that nature, maybe down the road a little bit.
Commissioner Avery.
I was not here when this was first discussed. I do not understand why we are doing a memorial to an incident that has very tenuous connections to the city. Are we planning to open up the park to memorials of other events? This...
Did you want me to answer that, or the commission?
This is for the commission. We know that you're very interested in this, and obviously influenced by the movie and things, but...
Well, it's basically the 72 people that were coming to the state of Michigan.
It's basically a tourist draw as well, no different than what we have with, you know, with the Mariner that houses the Titanic. And it'll be state and nationally recognized, which will bring tourists in, which will bring, hopefully, people to the restaurants in the area to shop, and, you know, and the different groups can, you know, do like the Titanic teas or dinners, and different things of that nature, you know, that they can do if they want to, which would bring money in. I mean, it's, it can be, and not only that, when you do something like this, it's also, like what Gary has is absolutely wonderful, and it's very educational, but I don't know how much that, you know, I mean, if a classroom, a teacher wants to do something on this, which people do stuff on the Titanic all the time, and if they want their students to pick, or if they have 30 students, and they want them to pick a family and do an essay on it, they could come here, they could go to the Mariner, and they can also pick a family and study on it, and, you know, and stuff of that nature. So there's a lot of different, we're not just talking, you know, local, I mean, we've got people from Canton and surrounding areas that had family coming here.
Commissioner Melvin.
There is quite a following of the Titanic, and from your previous presentation, I also understood that this would be the Titanic site in Michigan, and I think it follows very well with what Mr. Coles has done with the Titanic exhibit, and his awesome reproduction there, it fits in with that, and that Michigan has declared this to be the site in Michigan. Evidently, there are sites in many other states that people make pilgrimages to, as it were.
Yes, yes. And that's the whole thing, I mean, it's, the only thing, the only connection we actually had is John Jacob Astor, I believe it was the second maybe, or third, stayed here in Marine City, and, what's his name, Gary?
Gary Beal.
No, Gary Beal, is that his name? I mean, he can show you in the museum where he stayed here, and I mean, it's not, you know, it's not a direct connection per se, but, you know, it's just, you know, if we don't do it, somebody else will at some point, and I think it would be good for Marine City, just my own opinion.
Well, I could add, I was at the unveiling, when you did the unveiling, and we had some people there from Gross Point, they were there strictly for that, and they had never seen Marine City before, and they were amazed, and very impressed, and said they'd be back, you know, just to enjoy the town. So I think it is a good draw, and it will do good to promote the city. Commissioner Melvin?
Yeah. And answering your question, Mr. Avery, you addressed the board, and you asked if there would be other memorials to the park. Well, in all due respect, if it can draw and be an asset to the community, I don't see why not, you know. In other words, not just to say just the Titanic, but if there is another memorial event, especially dealing with ships or something, that's what Marine City is noted for, it can draw, you know, an audience to our community, and I'm all open if there would be another memorial to a park, another event or something, I'm not against it, and I don't think ABW is, as long as everything is in accordance about doing landscaping or whatever as far as maintaining the park or the memorial. I just wanted to answer your question, Mr....
Commissioner Hendrick.
The only response I'm gonna say, Commissioner Melvin, is I understand that we want to do this, but I also don't want all of our parks getting too much stuff, and we've had that comment before, so I think we do have to be careful what we're gonna put in, and make sure that we're not interfering for the, when they do the festivals, or just in general for the areas. So yes, we do, we should be careful that it doesn't get out of hand, you know.
Well, I think it'd be much more appropriate to have memorials for events that occurred on the Great Lakes, or specifically up through the river area here. We have a real history that is tied right to this local area and to the shipbuilding industry.
Well, we've got quite a few historical artifacts sprinkled around town, there's other places for things like that. If you ever thought of one, how is the funding coming on this?
It was, I'm in a standstill rate at this particular point until I got the final go-ahead with it, and, I mean, you know, there's no sense in me going out there and trying to get a ton of money and then have, trying to give it all back.
And it's kind of like PA 33.
Yeah, you know, so...
Oh, we didn't actually take that yet, so we didn't have to give it back. Commissioner Melvin?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept and go ahead with the Titanic memorial proposal, and that Ms. Micaw continues to keep this commission abreast of what is happening.
Motion to support. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment. First, I want to thank you for this. Until you brought this up, I had no idea that was, this number of people were actually intending to come to Michigan. And I think a lot of people would be surprised when they see this and find out that fact, so it's a wonderful thing that you're pointing out to people here.
Well, I mean, I know it doesn't directly affect anybody particularly here, although I just want to make it real quick, I mean, I was telling a couple people that I'm going to do the ancestry thing because there was a lot of people, or a few people coming from both, Bogota? Bogota. And it's name spelled almost identical to Dan's, but just a little off, so he may have had a few relatives that was coming over, coming to Ohio and Indiana.
And they were all just a little off.
But anyways, you know, this is not...
Apparently, they jumped in the lifeboat, too.
And I'm all for trying to help as far as, you know, like, with locally, with people who were here and died on, you know, getting some type of a thing done, but this is national, this is state and nationally recognized, and people would come from all over. No, that's the only reason why I have it, and the only reason is because I live here. Other than that, I go back to my hometown of Alkanac.
Basically, I just wanted to say thanks. Just wanted to say thanks for your efforts.
Thank you. Appreciate it very much.
Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
No.
It's been approved. Go get your money. All right, moving on to item 9B, oh, no, that was 9B, on to 9C, which is the employee policy and procedure amendment. Take it away.
Sure. So I've done a lot of research into what other communities have done for employees in regards to holiday time, for if they shift to a 4:10 schedule. Unfortunately, there wasn't really a lot of information out there. Everything really has been handled in administrative nature. I did find some information. This seemed to be something that worked the best. It does acknowledge that there is a bit of concession for the people that would be going to a 4:10 day, being the concession that obviously they would have Friday off, so this option of not compensating them for holidays that fall on regular scheduled days off, being Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Ultimately, we would be providing more hours of service. Next year, for example, we'd be available 2,030 hours instead of 2,000, based on the 8:00 to 5:00 schedule. This certainly is something that would, I think, provide more opportunity for residents to be able to get into the office within an hour radius. A lot of people probably work going to either Port Huron or down towards Sterling Heights area. This gives people more of an opportunity to get into the office, being open until 6:00 PM, and that's why I'm proposing this, for your consideration.
Is this something that the city manager proposes on her own?
I think, I think you have the authority to do this on your, are you looking for...
I actually have to come to you for an amendment for the policies and procedures, and this amendment, I'm adding this one section about the 4:10s.
So you're looking for someone to make a motion to approve this addition?
Make a motion to approve the amendment to the personnel policies and procedures manual.
Motion to support. Commissioner Simpson.
As we do, it makes a lot of sense. It addresses, you have the 4:10 hour days, and how chunks of time may be taken off. It addressed all the concerns that I might have, that sort of those loose ends, you talked about how most people handle administratively, I think this puts it in great detail. Are we setting the Monday through Thursday schedule? Is that a permanent schedule? And the only thing, you know, lists Good Friday, so if we're never gonna be open on Friday, do you have to update Good Friday as a paid holiday then?
Well, this exempts them from getting paid for Good Friday.
Right.
It would still be in the schedule, so if either the department or office, say, after six months, we find it's not working, and we shift back to the 8:00 to 5:00, we'd still have that in the schedule, or in the employee handbook.
What about the other language and concern to paid holidays and vacation, you know, because of the 10 hours?
Vacation time is all accrued on an hourly basis, based upon your service time. It's already hourly, yeah.
What about the holidays?
This is the holidays, so if it's a 10-hour workday, they're getting paid for 10 hours, but then they're losing two to six holidays a year for concession.
Okay. Heather?
On the vacation thing, so if they take one vacation day, and that's a 10-hour day, that equals 10 hours of their vacation.
It costs them 10 hours.
Okay.
Yep.
So what are your hours gonna be?
We're looking at 7:30 coming into work, the doors will be open at 8:00, and they'll be open until 6:00 PM.
Okay, so you just have that half hour where it's close, so you can get ready and...
Yep, half hour, and then half hour lunch. Most people don't seem to really need or want an hour lunch, so we'll be doing a half hour lunch.
And when do you want us to implement this?
I wanted to make sure that we gave enough time to notify the public. We're looking at probably the first pay period in January. I think that's January 7th is when it would be effective.
When are you gonna do a public announcement in the paper, or how are you gonna do it?
We'll put it on the website, put it out through Facebook. We can put it on, I think the tax bills are going out, so we'd be able to get it on that.
Electronic sign?
Yeah, we can put on the electronic sign, too.
Anyone else?
I just wanted...
Commissioner Melvin?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, so are you giving it a six-month trial period? Is that, do they understand? If it works out, then it's a call.
I think we'll do it. If you guys find that it's not working, or we want to come back and discuss it, then we can certainly put it on the agenda, make it up for discussion.
We can switch it back. It's not a mandatory for a whole year, is what I'm seeing.
No.
Okay. All right. Long as that's understood, okay.
Anyone else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Change of language, it's been approved. Change the language, it was going to prove. Moving on to item 10A, which is the sewer ready-to-serve fees.
So, I've had more discussions with people since the packets went out, and I think there might need to be a little bit of clarification about what, I think, the original intent was of the commission when you guys passed the ready-to-serve fees. So my understanding was, I thought we were looking at, just considering an exemption for second meters for sprinklers because the water did not go back into the sewer system, so they'd be exempt from that ready-to-service charge. It was brought to my attention that it actually may have been asked that they were looking to exempt the ready-to-serve fees for any additional meter that they would have. So is this something that you intended to have on a parcel basis so that everyone is paying for the infrastructure just based upon one parcel per person? Or is this something that with each meter, you're looking at any type of use or anything that goes on with that meter? And you're ready to service charge whether or not you want to potentially exempt both the water and sewer ready-to-serve or just the water portion?
My personal opinion is, is we should exempt the second meter totally.
For the ready-to-serve for sewer and water.
Right. Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, my recollection of the discussion, and we talked at length about water and issues like that, but one of the things brought up was, you know, different charges for different size mains to buildings and things like that. This is what we ultimately decided on, so I think in the spirit of that, if we were trying to hit somebody up, including particularly commercial buildings, we would have went in another direction with that. So that's my understanding, certainly my, the rationale behind my vote, which went behind this, is that we divvy up per parcel, so we're not double tipping or double charging anybody, including commercial buildings and certainly residents that, you know, have the sprinkler meter.
Commissioner Lovett.
So, and to understand what you're saying, the example would be Holy Cross, for example, that has five different entrance, five different hookups coming in there, and whose fees doubled because of this, went from a 400 to an 800. So they'd be charged for only one of those coming in?
Well, they're, they're in separate buildings, aren't they?
No.
No?
No, the buildings are all connected. Mike can probably answer that better.
The buildings have their own meters. They would be charged ready-to-serve fee. It's not a sprinkler system.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's a separate service.
Yes. Separate service for each building.
So answers.
I was just saying, you know, because you had the different commercial buildings and...
No, I think the thing is, you know, what we're trying to avoid is like a homeowner that just wants the water they want and not have to pay sewage on it. Now they're going to be charged double on the ready-to-serve fee. So it's the second meter that's trying to avoid the sewer charges that we're trying to exempt from this. At least, that's what I'm saying. Commissioner Hendrick?
Yeah, that's what it was. Because I know when we first started this whole discussion on these fees, we started out with per household, and then the treasurer came back and said, well, we need to do it by meter. And so we never even got into the discussion, these multiple meters. And when this person brought it to my attention and she showed me the two, it's true, she paid for that extra meter to try to save money, and now she's getting hit twice, so it didn't make any sense to do that. Because she still is responsible for that meter, she's still responsible for her line coming in, and this was for the water sewer lines out front. So I'm in agreement that we shouldn't be charged with that second.
Yeah, they are connected to the same service, so.
Yeah.
I've had some conversations with Jim Downey about this. There were several different ways I was looking at to deal with this issue. First of all, just administratively, based upon some language in the ordinance. Jim Downey, I think, was looking at some other language that potentially would put the responsibility of any type of modification into the fee schedule. And then there was also potential consideration to do an ordinance revision, which of course is a lot more detailed. You have to have the public hearings and notices and everything. If we could maybe table this, and I can take an opportunity, given the new information, to get with Jim Downey and figure out how best to handle this. I'd certainly like to handle this administratively and as easy as possible, as long as everybody is on the understanding that we're going on a one meter per household or whatever language it is.
I'll make a motion to table.
Or exempting the sprinkler meters.
I support.
So a motion to support the table. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? It has been tabled. Moving on to item...
So is that what, what you wanted? I thought you wanted the ability to make that decision yourself.
She wants to research it.
No, I need to do some more research and get with Jim and find out if we can do it administratively or if it has to be done by ordinance.
If it's going to be done by ordinance, then it's, it's a big dog and pony show and it's going to take longer to happen.
We may have to give credits back for everybody that paid.
Yeah, I understand all that. Was not my question, my question.
Well, I think, I think the credits are going to be issued, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be able to issue credits.
Was she could handle it herself instead of bringing it back?
Well, that's what she wants to research. That's why she didn't want to.
I think Mellie might have had one other question.
Well, I did. To my understanding, I thought when people got another meter for the water, for the sprinkler system, it was all in the same line.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what I'm saying, it's not two different lines coming into that house.
Well, that's, that's exactly what we said.
Yeah, okay, that's, but then as far as Holy Cross.
Well, they're all separate services.
You got a separate line going to each building then.
Yeah.
So then that's what I understand is an actual meter charge.
Right.
Okay.
I think it might be an important thing, too, just to look into the commercial properties, just to see if anyone has a very unique scenario that we should be addressing during this as well.
Yeah, Mike?
We have a couple of commercial buildings that have three meters in them, so you're going to have to make sure you list this as long sprinklers. We have industrial meters out there that service the shingle eaves and comes back in our system.
We had tabled this, so let's go on to item 10B, which is the King Road Park restroom facility.
Yes, the project, I understand, has been ongoing improvements over at the King Road Park. The Little League was at the planning commission, they had their plan before them, they did approve it. They're coming before commission today to get a waive, waiver for the plumbing, electrical building costs. I'm sorry, permit fees.
Permit fees.
Thank you. And then also, I, I do know that in the past, you guys have mentioned that anything that happens on city property, you guys really want final review of, so it's also here for that as well.
Commissioner Lovett?
I make a motion that the commission approve the waiving the public plumbing, electrical, and building fees associated with the King Road Park restroom project.
Motion in support. Any discussion on this? Commissioner Avery?
I think this is a very admirable thing, and I certainly support waiving the fee. However, the last sentence of this message, note that there will be long-term costs and maintenance associated with the restrooms that will need to be addressed at some point. In the spirit of going to a very austere budget, we might as well pick some point as starting these discussions right away, instead of leaving them to children. So if there's going to be costs, we should budget costs.
That's a valid point. Commissioner Hendrick?
Well, I'm looking at what they're constructing. They're going to have block construction with a metal roof, so mainly the cost is going to be security, the security issues, and then maybe the cleanup or the maintenance of the inside of the bathrooms. Because the exterior looks like it's pretty well...
Maintenance-free.
Bingo, yeah.
I'm Chris Simons from R.C. from the president of Little League for several years now. We want to build this structure for, for the kids in our Little League. And we try to design it as maintenance-free as possible. I've had a lot of discussions with Mike, some of his concerns, you know, about backups, I guess, sewage backups. So we're concerned with that. We're also going to really be policing it and monitoring it ourselves to make sure that we don't have any major issues out there, but I know it is a concern. I also did talk with Mike, if we do need to put some monies aside to address any, you know, cleaning, sewer cleaning, we'd be willing to do that. But we have the monies to build it, construct it, and...
Would this be open all the time, or are you just going to open it when you have?
I think we were just going to open it when we were using the park. So we'd be under somewhat of control of those bathrooms.
That's a very good idea.
Yeah.
Commissioner Simpson?
When the gentleman addressed the planning commission a couple of weeks back, they indicated they had a lot of, all the details worked out, they'd been in touch with Mr. Ittrich. One of my questions was, experienced through the music festival, Mr. Ittrich had shared how the restrooms at the beach had been just trashed and very inappropriate things done with them over the years, and that was the big concern about having a restroom like that. Sounds like these gentlemen have addressed, you know, cleaning issues and supervision issues quite well. And they've just done a great job over the years, especially the last few years of improving that park. And this was kind of part of the original plan. I think one of, if I'm remembering correctly, please correct me if I'm wrong, they originally had the training building, and some of these restrooms are going to be housed there. Obviously, the price tag on that is quite large. So this sort of is, and that had, that plan in general has been approved about a year ago with the city. But this is sort of an offshoot for that, it just moves that over so you can get these facilities more quickly. Summarizing that?
Exactly.
I'd just like to say that I'm extremely impressed with the Little League and what you've done in that park. Night and day difference, a Class A park now, that anybody would be happy to come down and play baseball in. And everything you guys have done so far has been top-notch, so I'm, I'm all for it.
Yeah, and I think with all the maintenance tree and as long as you can hose it down on the inside, sometimes, sometimes that's necessary, I don't know. But yeah, no, it's, it's a good, a good deal.
Anyone else? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
Thank you.
Have been approved. We've got the Synagro Materials Management.
No, no.
All 10C, 10C, John Stewart Billy. With Dan and Mike up here as some representative.
Changed the...
I know, but, but we didn't change this one.
You got to do it yourself.
Yeah, you got to do it yourself.
Well, we didn't say that.
I hadn't had a note and I missed it.
Yeah, we did. Here.
Has everybody had a chance to read John's?
No.
No?
No, but I, I had a lengthy discussion with him, so I'm aware of, of the issue.
Yeah, we're, basically what we're looking at is, we're, here we are in midstream, he's got tenants ready to move in within the next 30 days. And now we're looking at a cost of $40,000 to $100,000 more because of the fire rating required by our building inspector through the corridor.
Yeah, I, just to clarify something, were the plans modified since the original ones that were approved?
No.
Is that, did you look into that? Because we had that discussion Saturday.
Yeah, the windows were on the original plan, but the plans were not detailed at all.
But the plans were submitted twice, and the electrical contractor, the reason they were submitted twice is the electrical contractor needed more detail. If the building inspector needed more detail, John should have been aware of that prior to approval, approval of the plans. I mean, he had a set budget on this, and now we're...
Commissioner Hendrick?
I had heard something that might have been a second way to do it with glass blocks, is that true?
Well, yeah, but then you take away the whole retail aspect. I mean, people want to walk down this corridor and look in these buildings to see what's there for them to purchase.
Okay.
I mean, one of the suggestions they had was board it up with, with drywall. Then you've got a storage facility. It's no, no longer a retail mall.
Yeah, I understand, it's a condunum, but, I mean, I, I know you know that, that we can't override the codes.
Absolutely. But I guess what, if, if you read what John put here, and these are John's words, not mine, so don't shoot the messenger. Basically, to cover the cost, the additional cost, which was at, at no fault of John's, because he did his due diligence as far as going to the building inspector and going to these other open malls and getting suggestions. And I mean, he did a lot of work on this before he moved forward. And what he wants, which is not going to be a popular thing, is if he's required to put this extra cost in it, he wants a, he's requesting a tax abatement at the, for the amount of the extra cost.
$30,000.
He wants it 10 years.
Yeah, 10 years, $3,000.
No, but...
The cost of $30,000. I guess I'm a little confused now. How did one building inspector catch us and a previous building inspector approve it the way it was?
Well, the, the building inspector you've got now approved it the way it was.
Okay.
Wasn't a different building inspector.
Same guy.
Yeah.
When did he determine the window issue? When did he, just, just recently?
Yeah, last week, which, which surprised me because if you look at your consent agenda on, on the building inspector's report, he's got in there that he issued the permit, but there, we've had discussions, this was done on the 15th of November, we've been having these discussions for the last week and a half, two weeks. And he's got nothing in there about this being an issue for the commission to, to notify you guys that this is even an issue. And to me, it should be, it should have been in his, his report.
What are the, I mean, I know the, the building inspectors aren't liable for missing something on the plans, correct?
It's their responsibility to review what's there. Not everything is on the plans, as I said, they're, they're not full detail. So I think he was going on the assumption that this is something so obvious that it wasn't on the plans, but he figured that it was such an obvious thing that it was going to be done. And my understanding is, is, you know, get so far deep into it, and he's like, well, when are you going to do the fire suppression?
And, and as far as being obvious, I've, I've talked to, we've had fire suppression people in that have no idea why we are putting this, why we're being required to put the glass, fire rated glass in.
And that's something I would love to talk to those people or get something from them, because typically the responsibility is upon the person that's putting together the plans, whatever licensed professional they're working with. Our responsibility is to review what's there.
Absolutely.
So, you know, you get plans, it doesn't have every single detail, it doesn't have the exit signs.
Fire suppression is a pretty big thing, though. I mean, it's, it's...
How, how are you going to necessarily show that on, on plans? I mean...
Seriously?
You could, you could have notes for pages, everything that's required because of...
On, on the left side of the approved plans, if you read, there's four different sections there that say no fire, no fire protection needed, no fire protection needed.
And I would, I would love to see those plans and talk to someone.
They're in your office.
I, I have not seen that part of it. It wasn't pointed out to me, but, I mean, pointed out to me, I, I would love to see that.
Yeah, it's right in your, it's our plan she's got right in your office.
But the problem is, is that, you know, this is code, and if you have someone that says that it's not code, I would love to talk to that person and find out how they can get around this interpretation.
And we're not here to say we want to circumvent the code. You know, I mean, and...
Well, I'm hearing two different things. You're, you're originally saying that maybe this isn't required by code.
Well, I, I'm not a building inspector, I'm going by what the professionals tell me.
And was there an architect involved in that?
Yeah, and he's up hunting.
He's up hunting?
Yeah.
Yeah, because, I mean, as far as, I, I'm not an expert in building codes at all either, but I do know that exit corridors in multi-use buildings are treated differently.
Absolutely.
In fact, in some cases, I think of multi-story, they're required to have their own HVAC and be totally separate.
In multi-story, definitely.
Right. From all the things, so I don't really know. And it's, it's a one-hour fire rate, I believe, that they're asking for.
Yeah.
Or sprinkled.
Or sprinkled.
And one-hour fire rate, isn't that hard to get to, but the windows are the weak point?
$25 a square inch. It'd be cheaper to sprinkle.
Than to put the windows in?
Or maybe even put exterior doors in each unit. But the, the fact of the matter is, at no fault of John's, this is a tremendous amount of extra cost for him.
No, I'm very sympathetic to his plight.
And he's at the point now, and I'm, I'm here more on behalf of Marine City than I am even of John, because he's ready to squash the project.
Yeah, I know.
Unless he can get some recompense.
Yeah, it's a, it's a... This isn't the first time this has happened. It happens, you know, frequently in construction projects where something's missed and then projects where something's missed and then it's required and it's, you know, bigger cities that wouldn't even be up for discussion, it'd just be, this is what you got to do. You know, of course, in Marine City, we're very sensitive to that kind of stuff because the building's been sitting there empty for a long time.
Exactly.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I think it's two separate issues. I mean, certainly understand the plight, and Mr. Stewart's done wonderful work in the city, is trying to provide a good thing, but I do think ultimately, code is code, and it is on the onus. I've built fourteen different performing arts centers, there are substantial renovations to them, and the mayor is right, I mean, this happens all day, every day in those, and it's, you know, the architect has air and emissions insurance for that reason, for oversight and those things, and that's why people have contingency funds when a project is managed, is to cover these types of things. Certainly seem, you know, even in his letter, based on what I'm reading, it indicates that, you know, he, someone says that he had advice from the city and that he wasn't an expert, so he's really sort of admitting that the shortcomings in there. Again, nothing against him, but, you know, I think ultimately, code is code, and if we, you know...
Well, we can't override.
Exactly, that's, yeah, and unless we can prove, you know, via some documentation that you might have, why it might not, you know, be code.
And I'm not here to ask to override the code. He asked me to present this to see if there was any way that if he moves forward, there'd be a room for a tax abatement.
As opposed to an empty building?
As opposed to an empty building.
Commissioner Malley?
Maybe I misunderstood you, but you made a comment that you could put a sprinkler system in?
Yes.
Versus putting the fire rated windows?
Mm-hmm.
And why won't the inspector?
Oh, that's one of the options that the city has given.
So, how much money would we be, would he be saving versus the difference?
Preliminary, I've got a price of fifty thousand dollars for the sprinkler system as opposed to a hundred thousand dollars for the windows.
That's the entire space.
But all of that is in addition to what he was planning on spending, Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, I understand that part, because it was an oversight, but I don't want to put a building and aspect of, in case that there is a fire, then wouldn't the city be liable because it was not...
At this point, I'd say, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, now, if we, if you went with the sprinkler system, which I'm all for a sprinkler system, I can't see spending that kind of money for windows, that's ridiculous. But what will we be talking then, he said tax abatement for how many years?
Ten.
Yeah, ten years for a sprinkler system?
Well, it depends on, I don't know what his taxes are, I don't know if his numbers here are accurate or not.
The building has to be reassessed after improvements also, but I don't think that's probably happened, no. So, the value of the building is going to change, which would affect any calculation that's made here.
Exactly.
But is there an alternative, could they, is there like a fire shutter or something like that?
I've got, Bummer Jack's has worked me up a price on fire shutters to see if that's someplace in between the sprinklers and the bulletproof glass. Or I even asked Art if we could just sprinkle the corridor, and he said, no, it would have to be the whole building.
City manager?
I just wanted to add one other thing. One of the things noted in here is he's kind of got this time pressing deadline of wanting to get one business in there, because they bought a bunch of stuff for the holiday season and they want to be able to get there, otherwise their innocence is going to lose their business. I've spoken with Art and we've been working with them to try to find some way to at least get one person in there before the holidays, and I think Art has come up with some way working with the architect to get at least one business in there on a temporary basis as we move forward, trying to resolve this issue.
Starting a hose for the sprinkler?
No, actually, what, there are other exits for that and...
Yeah, that particular unit does have an exterior exit besides the corridor exit, so...
Yeah, one thing about what he mentioned about closing off the windows is that that can be another temporary way. So they've already boxed out the windows, so temporarily, they can fill the windows in until, say, maybe, you know, future funding to be able to put the windows in and either make a sprinkler system or some fire safe windows in there. So we've been exploring options and things to try to get this going, and I think it's just not quite at the speed that he would like.
Is there any grant opportunities that maybe he can look into or take advantage of?
We could certainly contact Mike Hillfinger with SCS, see if there's anything. I know there's the facade, I don't know how much that would help him.
Like I said, I'm very sympathetic to what he's doing, and I'd really like to see his project move forward, but I'm also a little nervous about creating, you know, presidents here that, and plus, I think we'd be admitting some kind of, by fault, you know, at that, so I'm, I would like to make sure that every...
As far as the abatement?
Well, no, I mean, why would we...
I haven't seen signs of any fault or anything, it's just something that I think assumptions were made, that they were going to be doing this and addressing the fire suppression, and it just got to the point where, where's fire suppression? And that's kind of where we are now.
I know we've done tax abatements on factories, those have been done in the past, but they've had requirements to keep so many employees and yada yada, and you have a regular contract. So it's been done.
That's something that would take time.
Yeah.
Commissioner Malley?
Yeah, I just want to make another comment. Basically, if we gave permission to let this one tenant in for the holiday season and then have more accurate figures...
Well, we wouldn't even have to give permission.
That one they can do.
That one would be in compliance.
Oh, that one's already in, so I thought that was the urgency for the one tenant to be moved in.
Well, there's other tenants lined up to move in there also, but the one in particular, I know who it is, and she's already gone out and bought her stock, and if she misses the Christmas selling season, she's sunk, so...
And I, and just conversations I've had with John, I don't know if he wants to go further in the project, if he's got to put another hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know he was struggling to get it financed in the first place.
Yeah, it's been kind of difficult working with him, he had to go out of town, and I wanted to be able to get a meeting with all of us together and possibly representative from the commission to be able to work this out towards something that can potentially be brought to the full board for some type of approval.
When will he be back?
Saturday.
Oh, thank God.
Does anybody got anything else to add here? I mean, that's, Commissioner Lovett?
Well, I don't think that the tax abatement is a bad idea, doesn't have to set a precedent for anything. It's showing, I mean, there, perhaps we should have been on our end a little more due diligence in making sure that everything was covered, because fire suppression is, I mean, I've renovated places in the old convent here, for example, and fire suppression was one of the first things, and you said it's there, no fire suppression needed, or something like that. I mean, you know, there seems to be a lot of contradictions here in this.
That's the only thing, and not trying to put fault on anybody, but when you look at the approved plans, on the left side of the front page, it says in three or four different spots, no fire suppression needed.
So we either, we either at this point say, hey, you know what, the building inspector did something here or didn't do something, or we tried...
Who were those notes made by?
The notes were made by the architect.
By the architect?
Yeah, they're notes that came right with the plan.
Right, so, so that wasn't our building person putting those notes on, the architect was saying that there's no fire suppression, so obviously, you know, that's going to cause some confusion in this.
So it wasn't drawn up on the plan, but it was noted, right? Yeah, it was noted, so I mean, when he approved them, the notes were right there, you know, and if he had a disagreement with that...
At that point, he should have spoke up and...
Absolutely.
That isn't really his responsibility, it's the responsibility of the building designer and architect.
He's approving the initial plan.
Right, but...
With that on it.
I know, but that doesn't, he can always go back and say, this wasn't done right, I mean, it's...
This is why building code exists, and so everyone's building to the same standard.
When did John get the building permit? I'm not sure.
Because I know that there were some preliminary plans that were reviewed long before a building permit was issued.
Yeah, I went in, it was some, one day last week or the week before, and Art pulled your plans out that showed the approval, and it has the list of those fire suppression...
When I had my private conversation with Art, he told me that the preliminary plans were approved by John Gaver and Brian.
Might have even been conceptual.
Yeah, that's true, but this, the other set of plans were approved, the final set of plans were approved by Art.
But as I was saying, that I think that, you know, there have been so many perhaps errors and not due diligence done, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, in the spirit of encouraging growth and people to invest in this community, that, you know, a ten-year tax abatement is not a terrible amount of money to do. I don't know, anybody else?
Well, I thought that if we could just sprinkler the corridors, you're really lowering the cost.
Mm-hmm.
And that's basically what the fireproof glass is going to do, is keep it from going from one building to another, is the same way sprinkler in the corridor is going to do.
Well, that's what the professionals are paid for, and that's...
But Art said no.
Well, then he needs to provide documentation as to why he said no. And then if he has documentation and he can prove it, well, then we can move forward. I mean, why did he say no originally? That's my big question. I mean, I, I think the architect needs to take some responsibility in all this and come forward.
A lot of it to this point has kind of been, he said, he said, because there really isn't a lot of documentation to this point.
No, I'm just saying, if the notes on the plans were put there by the engineer, if they had a mechanical engineer or an architect who ever put those notes on there, if they have a valid reason for those notes, they should be able to produce the documentation behind it.
Documentation, whatever.
That's why they're certified plans.
Right, right. Has that, has the designer been approached?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've had multiple conversations with him.
And...
And he's talked to Art, and in fact, I talked to the architect today.
Right, but did you ask for supporting documents?
I did, and he's going up, he says he's going to get it to me, but he's going up to meet his family up north for the deer season, so everything else goes on hold.
That is really what I would like to hear from, you know...
It's a little frustrating to say that, you know, they're up against a time crunch, and then someone can go on vacation, you know, work both ways. And I understand family obligations, like, by all means, but, yeah.
I would, I guess I'd just like to let Elaine try to set something up between them and attorneys and the architects and the whole bit, and try to get all this stuff together and so that they can all sit down and discuss it, to figure out what's, what we can do, either this or whatever else can be done. But we almost got, she almost has to have that to...
Well, I wouldn't be opposed to a special meeting.
Oh, me neither.
Just to get this cleared out.
Yeah, we have to, yeah.
I mean, I'm like, you know, I get, I'm fairly involved in these type of situations on a regular basis, and I want to hear from the architect, because I believe he's the one that created the original confusion, so I want to hear from him. And if he put that on those plans, he should have a valid reason and a way to support that.
It does cite the code on the notations, which I don't remember what it was, but...
Yeah, like I said, I haven't seen the plans, but I wouldn't be opposed to looking at them.
Maybe the first of next week, we can all get together, because they should both hopefully be back.
And I think we definitely still want to move forward towards getting that temporary use.
I agree, I agree.
I, you know, I'm sure we can find a way to make this work one way or the other, I just don't want to...
Oh, come on, just jump on it.
I don't want to jump the shark.
Just jump on it, man.
Yeah, well, you know, we're so flush, we're so flush with money, you know, it's...
We only need eighteen hours to call a special meeting.
Right, and we can call a special meeting and do whatever we got to do to help facilitate this project, I just...
I know she wants to be open by December 5th, because I think that's when the big shindig is, so...
Right.
It's the weekend, yeah.
But even if that doesn't happen, I know they're going to provide a space somewhere for her, but, you know...
Well, your house has got a lot of room, I know.
My house doesn't get good traffic.
It's off the beaten path.
It's off the beaten path, the kids don't even come down there for trick or treating, so...
You got the big candy bar.
Yeah, no. Literally, they don't come down, because, you know, I think if you go all the way down, then you got to come back and you've already hit all those houses, so it's wasted effort. They're smart.
Okay, so Elaine's going to set up a meeting?
No, I don't think we need a motion at all, and if we get some new information, or even if we don't, we'll call a special meeting and make sure we help facilitate this somehow.
Okay.
Commissioner Avery?
Just to clarify, from what I understand here is that we are going to allow this one occupancy to go in because it seems to meet requirements, so that we're not stopping that part of it.
Right, the fire rated exit corridor isn't required for that particular space.
Although I would like to move forward as quickly as possible, because I don't know if John's going to want to put good money in if he's not, you know, if he's not, if he can't finish it, yeah.
Well, he's looking to move in a candy store like the first of the year.
Yeah.
So, that's less than thirty days really working.
I think what I'm hearing from the commission here is that we're willing to work with John and make this happen one way or the other.
Wow.
We'll find a way, we'll find a way to do it legally.
Oh, I would hope so.
Yeah. So, if there's anything else on this?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did we just integrate?
No, now we're at ten, which is...
Old C.
Old C, but we'll call it D, ten D, which is the Synergy Row Materials Management Agreement.
I make a motion that we keep the Synergy Row Technologies Incorporated as our sludge hauler at the sewer treatment plant.
Support?
Motion, support. Any discussion?
Couple issues or questions about this. First of all, I understand this has probably never been before you guys as a contract, and then I also wanted to let you guys know that we went out and solicited bids from a few companies that actually provide bids, there are only like three companies that actually do this service in Michigan, one we didn't get any information from, and then the other two we did. I know that there is a provision in the, I can't remember what the policy is called, the purchasing policy, where if something is over two thousand dollars, it's required to get sealed bids. It might be prudent prior to doing this to do a vote to override that.
Waive the bid?
Waive the bid, yeah.
Waive competitive bidding.
Which would have to be a unanimous vote?
Correct. I don't know how you feel about that, we are in a bit of a time crunch, this was a contract that we've been sitting on because they haven't really pushed the issue, it's been expired for quite a while. Unfortunately, we did get a call from them recently that they're due to come out next week and haul, and they're saying that they won't haul if we don't have a contract, which does not put us in a good position, and I apologize for that. I don't know if Mike has any way to work around that if things don't go well tonight, maybe he can come up and address that, but that's where we are with this issue. As I said, it's something that never really came to you guys before, we've had them for a number of years as our hauler of choice, because they really were the logical one. These haulers have to go out and find locations to haul the sludge. This company has procured a location that's just outside of the borders of Marine City. Going with any new hauler, they are going to have to go out and find a new location, which we have no idea where that would be until we get a contract with them, and then they start going out and trying to find the location. We're subject to hauling fees and paying the gas for the hauling.
So I take it your recommendation is to waive competitive bidding and approve the contract?
I withdraw my motion.
All right, so, might I have anyone?
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding for the Synergy Row Technologies contract.
Support?
Motion, support to waive competitive bidding. Any discussion? Commissioner Simpson?
Yeah, I was just saying, normally I wouldn't be a fan of waiving competitive bidding, but certainly the spirit of competitive bidding has happened, you contacted all the known players and, you know, this actually happens quite regularly for a number of things, and people don't reply back, so you didn't go by the book, but certainly, in the spirit of things, you have done due diligence, and I think that's the important thing here, is that, you know, no one's trying to sneak something in at an open bid contract, I think it's, that's an important difference to make, is that, you know, intent was done.
Yeah, we need to get rid of this stuff.
Yeah.
They don't want us sitting there.
And I like that it's going just outside the border.
They do it in the fields, though, on 26th there.
Could smell it periodically.
That's the other farm.
All right, any more discussion on this? All in favor say yes.
Roll call.
No, we're not spending money to waive competitive bidding.
No, wait, well, usually they do a roll call in competitive bidding, because you gotta make sure it's unanimous.
It's gotta be unanimous.
It's gotta be unanimous, all right. All right, roll call.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Melly?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatardik?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right.
I now make a motion that the Marine City keeps Syntagro Technologies Incorporated as our sludge hauler at the sewer treatment plant.
Support. Motion, support. Any discussion? I think we've probably covered the bases on this. Uh, roll call, please.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Melly?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatardik?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
All right. Moving on to item 10E, which is building permit cancellation refund.
Apparently, um, there was some miscommunication in the office regarding this, um, it isn't something that has normally come before the board. Um, now there's circumstance of some new players here that, uh, didn't really know the procedure, what's been done in the past. Um, you can vote on it if you want, that's fine, or you could just, uh.
I don't think it's necessary. I'm sure they do refunds all the time.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Avery?
I do have a question on it, and that is, who requested this refund? Because it's not stated on here, and I happen to.
I believe it's the homeowner that requested it.
I ran into him in.
It's not the home?
City Hall, and he was surprised that this was here.
Okay.
It, that's, I happen to know the individual, and I, I commented that that was good, because he was having a hassle with his firm, they didn't want to accept his cancellation of their service for shoddy work. Um, so when I saw this come through, I thought, well, okay, he's following a logical order, but he didn't do this, so.
He did not request it, okay, it probably pulled the permit.
Well, the contractor pulled the permit, and, and when they lost the job, they probably.
Well, they have acknowledged they lost the job, that's all I was wondering. But, fine, it's just, it.
So.
Yeah, you're not required to.
It is confusing.
Take any action on this item.
But thanks for sharing.
You're welcome. Some growing pains here for me and some others in the office.
All right, on to item 10F, which is Recreation Village Distribution Report. Just motion, accept and file.
I make a motion to accept and file the request for local village distribution.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion, questions? All in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. And to item 10G, which is Resolution of Exemption.
Can we do all of them?
All right.
I think you guys can do one.
Yeah, we gotta do one at a time.
Okay, make a motion to accept the resolution of exemption for the Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act 2014-2015.
Support.
Motion, support. Questions, comments? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Onto item 10H, which is Resolution of Exemption.
I move that we approve the resolution of exemption for Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act for 2015-16.
Support.
Motion, support. Discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Carrie's on to item 10I, which is Resolution of Exemption for 2016-17.
I make a motion to accept the res, less, resolution of exemption for publicly funded health insurance contribution act for 2016-17.
Support.
Motion, support. No discussion, all in favor say yes.
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 Opposed, say no. Resolution's passed. And to item 11A, which is Disbursements Including Payroll.
I move to, uh, approve disbursements including payroll in the amount of $559,854.97 as presented.
Motion, support. Discussion? No one? Roll call, please.
Uh, Commissioner Lovett?
Yes.
Commissioner Melly?
Yes.
Commissioner Simpson?
Yes.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes.
Mayor Skatardik?
Yes.
Commissioner Avery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yep.
Motion, support.
Item 11B is our Preliminary Financial Statements, dated October 2015.
I move to accept the preliminary financial statements in place of my files.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? All in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. They have been approved and filed. City Managers Report.
Let's see, Monday, I attended a Blue Means Green meeting up in Port Huron, um, first time anyone from Marine City's actually attended one of those meetings in quite a while, so I gave them a little update on what's going on with the Burton's Hotel, since obviously they're one of the interested parties there. Um, last Tuesday, I went around with Bill Craytop, he kind of gave me a little bit of a meet and greet to the county offices, including the clerk and treasurer, and, uh, the planning offices, IT. Um, that was pretty enlightening, and I actually was able to resolve a, um, building or property dispute issue, I was working with DPW, with the IT person. Um, tomorrow, I'm gonna be meeting with a representative from Wade Trim, who in the past has, uh, helped with some of our planning services. I understand we haven't really tapped into them as a resource for a couple of years, so just a meet and greet at this point, and, uh, that's it, that's all I got.
Commissioner Hendrick, do you like to start the Commissioner's Report?
Oh, boy, okay, sure. Um, just want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving and holiday. Um, don't forget the Santa Parade, November 24, 7:00 PM, the Old Newsboys paper sales, the 27th, 28th, that's a Friday and a Saturday, um, and please don't run them down. Um, and the Old Newsboys always meets on Tuesdays, except for the night of the parade, but we usually meet on Tuesdays at the Fire Hall, 7:00 PM, if anybody wants to volunteer. December 5th is the Bake Sale, Craft Show, and Joe Dog Day at the KSC Hall, um, and Hells Our Home is also having a cookie, um, and sale for us from 6:00 to 8:00 PM the same day, I think the whole town is having something. So, uh, it looks like a good, uh, good big event for the 5th, and hopefully everybody will come out, that's it.
Commissioner Avery?
I have nothing, thank you.
Commissioner Simpson?
I just want to, uh, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as well, we're, the holiday season is quickly coming upon us, so I just, um, this year's been pretty enlightening as we go through budgets, and then seeing folks in our communities, and seeing, um, how little money some folks may have, so, um, in this, uh, time of reflection at the end of the year, and then, and our holidays, uh, it's appropriate time to, to consider our neighbors, and, uh, you know, there's a lot of those that may be unfortunate, and you might not have, uh, money to offer them, but, uh, many folks, uh, you know, help with yard work, or snow removal, or, uh, you know, just knowing that they have a supportive neighbor might be equally as important as, uh, as they try to make it through the holidays, it can often be a difficult time for many people, um, and, uh, I think that's one of the wonderful things about, uh, um, living in a small community, um, about how supportive us, some neighbors can be, so I would encourage those out there that, uh, might have a bit more to give or to share, whether it be time, um, advice, um, labor, um, or even money or a meal, um, I would encourage you to, uh, give as much as you can to our neighbors in our community, that's, that's what makes a, a city worth living in, that's, uh, what makes, uh, neighbors, uh, more friendly, and I, um, anyone can buy a house, um, you know, makes a neighborhood and a community and a home, or, or the people that we share it with, so I would encourage people just to, to think about that as we, uh, go through the new year.
Commissioner Melly?
Yeah, I want to say, um, I want everybody to have a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and it's a pleasure, um, Elaine, you've been proving yourself, you've been open more and letting the commission know more detail what, uh, different things is going on in the community, um, to, for us to be aware of. And, um, also, I just feel as though that I, I'm thankful that, uh, we're putting the PA 33 to the vote for the people, and you're also doing your job, and you're finding out how you're budgeting to make our community work and function, and I want to give support to the police department, I appreciate you, Officer Heshlop, that you're doing your diligence, and you're making provisions, and you're cutting some cost factors, a great deal cost factor to making this possible, to make our community be a functional community. And again, I hope everybody has a safe holiday and a season, and one other thing, in case if you, you know, Chambers is a good place of resource, if you want to find out some information, what events are going on, um, because I hate to see you miss out on the event, um, there are so many different things that goes on in a small town, to enjoy our town, thank you.
Air Pro Town.
Um, question, Monty Hand Company, City Hall, are we, is that all finished?
I don't believe that it is.
I, I was the last person to respond, and, uh, I haven't had a response, so. There's, there's a few items that have not been completed, that we had discussed on our original meeting, so. Have you heard from, uh, Kevin?
Nope, I haven't.
I know communication broke down, but then there was talk that they were gonna come back and finish.
And they did, and they did quite a.
Then they came back, and they were supposed to fix the other front door, and they put a plate steel over it, and they have them in bags, so.
Right.
They're waiting for parts, or what they're doing?
They did repairs on the, the, uh, east stairs, they poured concrete, they fixed a lot of doors, uh, but they missed a few items, and.
Missed a few items.
And he sent us an email saying, okay, everything's done, and I fired one back, said, no, not quite, and.
Mike, is that, is that door secured now?
Yes.
Okay.
We went up there and, I think it's secured.
Actually, I, I met with Mike and Becky there, we took a look at the doors, and those doors certainly are not the easiest ones to deal with, I believe Becky was gonna actually put a sign up to, to not use those doors, especially as a day-to-day basis, you know, when there's an event or something, obviously, only utilizing those, but.
They're a three-point latch, and, and a lot of people aren't used to that.
Yeah, yeah, so.
As long as they're secured.
Yes, they are.
Thanks.
And, um, that's the way my door law at home works, so it's like.
My wife and I went for a walk on Sunday morning after Halloween, and the doors are wide open, I'm like.
The ghost is.
Well, that's my first thought, was the ghost is back. Or Becky, one or the other.
Now, so to answer your question, no, it hasn't been completed, but a, a lot was done, and it's in better shape than it was. Commissioner Lovett?
Thank you. Um, well, as long as we're on the topic of City Hall, I know there were some questions at the last meeting, and just to let you know that, um, Reverend Leftley and I will be putting lights, you'll see us around the building on Saturday, um, putting up all the lights in, in the dormers and windows, and, and I understand we, she has some new LED ones, want it to look nice for the Santa Parade, so I'm sure if anybody'd like to come and help us, you're more than welcome, it's at 2:00, 3:00, 3:00, so, um, you'll see us there, and you're, you're more than welcome to, uh, stop by and see exactly what we're doing. Um, there'll be some cleaning going on in the, in the early of, um, December, because we'll be getting ready for maritime days, which, uh, it'll be open, and also during the, um, Women's Club's home tour, um, City Hall will be open, uh, there'll be a Dickens display there, Christmas display, if you saw it at, um, Heritage Day, uh, it's gonna be even more wonderful, it's just gonna be a beautiful display there, we're gonna have all kinds of decorated Christmas trees and decorated wreaths there, so, you know, do come by and see what's going on and ask questions, um, we'll just be staying in the main part, so, um, you know, do come in. Um, I want to wish everyone a very blessed and joyous Thanksgiving, um, in this community, we have so much to be thankful for, um, we have so many, um, wonderful, um, people in this community who have, um, done a lot for us, the men and women who, uh, keep City Hall working so well on the direction of, um, City Manager Levin, we have the, the men and women of the, the Police Department, who, uh, do an outstanding job keeping our city safe, uh, day and night, um, they are always there, and, uh, Chief, our interim Chief Lieutenant, James Heslop, is doing a wonderful job with that, and, um, we really appreciate, um, how he has stepped in, uh, into that position. The men and women who keep our city in repair, um, often with bubble gum and string, and they've so beautifully decorated, uh, the downtown, um, you made a great selection of, of lights and, uh, arrangements for, um, you know, our downtown and, and business area of the community, um, under the leadership of Mike Ittrich. The men and women, um, who so ably educate our children in this community, both public and private, outstanding, um, the services that are provided, um, those who work with the students in, um, outside activities as well are fantastic, and we appreciate that. The men and women who lead us in prayer and worship in the, in many churches in this community, and offer so much to, um, everyone, uh, the men and women who take the extra time and commitment to serve on our different commissions and, um, groups, especially those who serve under this commission, um, with our, uh, able leadership of our mayor, Ray Skatardik, and thank you to all of the residents who make this a wonderful city in which to live and raise their children, thank you.
Is that it? All right, well, has anybody mentioned the, the maritime, uh, Christmas event?
Just slightly.
Just slightly, it's on December 5th, right? And you're gonna have, uh, Mr. Coe's at the maritime there, you're gonna have a, a, like a package for people with coupons and.
Package with discounted coupons, and really, you know, fast, they're really sound from back, and then Museum in Sombra will be handing the packages out, because they charge fair one-way, so Canadians will be able to come across free. And the radio station we're working with, WGRT, initially negotiated about $50,000 in free airtime to promote this, and, uh, we assured them that we'd sell out their commercial time, last week we were advised that the commercial time was sold out, so we solved their problem by having them start the promotion a beat earlier. So now we got another $50,000 in promotional time, so essentially the concept is, come to Marine City, go to the Old Newsboys Craft Show, have a Joe Dog, get in the Bill McDonald Shuttle Van will take you downtown, and go to Canada, come back, spend all your money, go back to your parking place at the, the, at the KSC Hall, and go home.
I, I heard Santa's gonna be there, too.
Yes, we got Santa, we got, uh, the, we got the high school kids involved, and the kids are just fantastic, and they're gonna be assigned to each business, and they're gonna be greeters, and they're gonna be thanking people for coming, and they're gonna be a big part of the community, so the kids are really excited, so it's, it's, yeah, it's